It is 6:30, so we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. If we could go ahead and have a roll call, please.
It's Roger Spears.
Here.
Craig Connell.
Here.
John DeGrand.
Here.
Terry Atwell is absent. Donna Getzmann.
Here.
Bob Paulson.
Here.
And Jeff Huff. Thank you. We do have a quorum.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. If we can get the statement for the hybrid.
Yes. This meeting is now being recorded in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. For Zoom participants wishing to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app at the start of the agenda item on which you desire to comment. Comments will be received from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. When it is your turn to speak, the moderator will recognize you by the name or phone number used to join the Zoom webinar and your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and the community where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call 913-715-9666. Board members, staff, and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking, and please speak into the microphone so your comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We go to the agenda items here. Is there anything that we need to add, delete, or revise? And approve the agenda? Looks like we are good on that. Is there anything? Okay.
Any motion?
All right. And then disclosure of conflicts of interest.
Yes, this is John DeGrand, and I want to state for the record that the property directly to the east across Sunflower Road from the proposed accessory dwelling unit for tonight is owned by my father's trust, and I am trustee. And while staff has informed me that that does not create a direct conflict of interest, I will abstain from voting when the time comes, just out of a bunch of caution.
All right, very good. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, and then disclosure of external contacts or discussions. I think we're good on that as well. We just need a motion for the approval of the minutes.
A move. We approve. This is Bob Paulson.
Craig Connell, second.
If we can do a vote?
Yeah. Roger Spears.
Yes.
Craig Connell.
Yes.
John DeGrand.
Yes.
Donna Getzmann.
Yes.
Bob Paulson.
Yes.
And Jeff Huff.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Very good. If we could, the board reports, we're going to do a Board of County Commissioners' actions.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board, Sean Pendley, county planning staff, for Board of County Commissioners' actions. On June 26th, the B O C C approved an application that was considered by this board for a conditional use permit for outdoor storage in a contracted business. This is for Larry Towner, property located at 11300 South Waverly Road. The board did approve that application on June 26th. That concludes Board of County Commissioners' actions for this board. I feel like I can proceed with the planning commission actions. There was a, at the last planning commission meeting on June 24th, there was an update regarding the transportation connection plan, which we'll, we'll have staff here this evening to provide an update on that to this zoning board as well. There was also on the schedule for the June meeting, the annual comprehensive plan review. That, that is a review that staff provides to the planning commission annually to make sure that the comprehensive plan is still current. And that meeting, that particular item was rescheduled because we didn't have a quorum that evening. So that item was rescheduled to the August meeting. We also had election of officers that was scheduled, and that was also postponed. The meeting this month for July has been canceled, so the next meeting for the planning commission will be August 26th. And at that time for that meeting, we'll have an update, again, a follow-up on the transportation connection plan in relation to the carnet plan. The carnet plan is the comprehensive arterial roadway network plan. We'll talk a little bit about that this evening, too, on this item later on the agenda. But that's something that staff will be providing an update on that to the planning commission this fall. So we'll, we'll have an update for the planning commission at the August meeting, and there's anticipated a public hearing scheduled for the September meeting with the planning commission. So we'll go over some of that later, but that's just an update on the planning commission, and happy to answer any questions.
All right, perfect. Thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Chairman, one last thing.
Yes.
Just as a reminder, this board is very good, but I have, I have been asked by our technology staff when speaking, any of the zoning board members or planning commissioners, always remember to have your microphone on when you're speaking and announce your name. We have had some past meetings where we were not mindful of that, and we didn't capture some audio. So I think this board is good, but just as a reminder, make sure your microphones are on when you speak. Thanks.
All right, very good. All right, next is, we're going to go through the business. In front of the board here, we've got an application number W25-498-ADUPMC, accessory dwelling unit permit 36265 West 151st Street. We're going to first hear from the planning office.
Good evening. Zoe Brown, planning. This application is for an accessory dwelling unit permit. The subject property is located at 36265 West 151st Street on 32 acres. The subject property and surrounding properties are zoned rural, and there are currently two single-family homes and an accessory structure on the property. The applicant is requesting approval of an existing 948-square-foot home to be used as an ADU. The 948-square-foot cabin was built in 1975, and the main house was built in 1960. But according to the regulations, only one dwelling unit is permitted per lot unless an ADU is approved. So if an application does not meet the standards for an administrative ADU certificate, then an ADU permit is required. The proposed ADU exceeds the 900-square-foot maximum area and is greater than 200 feet from the main house. All of the other standards outlined in the regulations for ADUs are met. Ultimately, the owner wants, intends to divide the 32-acre property, but to be eligible for a tract split, the property owner must receive approval for an ADUP. Several configurations of the tract split were considered, including one where the cabin would remain on its own parcel, as seen here. However, this would create a parcel largely covered in floodplain, making development unfeasible and environmentally unsound. So this one does not work. This configuration would create a parcel with less, less floodplain, making it more feasible for a future home. And this is the tract split layout that the property owner intends to pursue if the ADU permit is approved. This ADUP meets the minimum infrastructure requirements, and public works stated no concerns about the road, but they did note that any future improvements to the cabin may require a floodplain development permit. In staff's opinion, the application meets the golden criteria. For criteria number one, the subject property is located in the rural district. The surrounding uses are residential and agricultural. The surrounding area is made up of large lots ranging from 6 to 75 acres. For criteria number two, the proposed ADU was built in the 1970s, and the main house was built in the 1960s, so it wouldn't be a change in character of the neighborhood to just have that smaller house used as an ADU. For criteria number three, the property is suitable for agricultural and residential uses. For criteria number four, the effects of an ADU would be minimal to the nearby properties since the house has been there for over 50 years. For criteria number six, there doesn't appear to be any gain to the public health, safety, and welfare by denying the request. If the ADU permit is denied, the landowner would not be able to further divide the property, as they intend to do, because of the non-compliance with the second residence on the lot. And lastly, the criteria, for criteria number seven, the subject property is within the rural policy area. This is a 32-acre property, and it's consistent with the plan. The recommended density in the rural policy area is one dwelling unit per 10 acres. And if a future tract split is approved, the recommended density will continue to be maintained. The tract split is not something that, that's an administrative approval, but the ADU permit would be required prior to that. Staff recommends approval subject to stipulations in the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for the staff from the board? There does not appear that there's any questions. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Now, the applicant, if, if, would you like to present? You can do that. Just state your name and address and step up to the microphone. Yeah. If you're, if I'm. Okay, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, there's a, so there are questions from the member of the audience that, I believe, the applicant has stated that they have no additional comments other than staff's presentation. We will have an opportunity for public comment if anybody does have questions. We would welcome them to the podium to state their name and address, and then staff and/or the applicant can answer any questions.
Okay. All right, very good. So applicants are good, no questions. So now, at this point, public comments? So if there are public comments, somebody that would like to do that, you can restate your name, address, and come to the microphone and, and share your comments.
Yes, if there's any comments that you would like to share with the board, we can take those comments. If you could hand them to Melissa, we can make a copy of that and then provide them to the board following the meeting, unless you have copies now. Okay, so what we would say is if you could share, if you could share your comments, and then we would be happy to make a copy, and we could file that as part of the public record, and then that would also be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners if you would like, but you can hold that. Yeah.
I don't have my reading glasses on. I'm so sorry. I brought them. They're in the car. So it says, on this.
Could you state your name and address, please?
1979 Larry.
Ma'am.
Excuse us. State your name and address, please.
My name is Diana O'Connor.
Hey.
I live at 933 North Iowa, Olitha, Kansas, 66061.
Thank you.
And this document so states that on the 28th day of November, 1979, Larry L. and Carolyn F. Daly, at that time were husband and wife. They later divorced in 1993. They lived on the property 36115 West 151st Street. This property that you're speaking of is on that property. It's 36265 West 151st Street. Does convey and warrant to myself this property that you're speaking of. And this was November 28th, 1979, and I think I've been left out of this. Had I not seen the sign the other day, I would not have known, so I'm thankful I did. Y'all are welcome to look at this and pass it around and, and make.
Certainly, staff can make a copy of this, and we can make sure that the, the resident here does get a copy of this back before the end of this meeting, but we can, this is just what the, they've provided is a deed, is a warranty deed of the property, so we could certainly enter this in as part of the record, and we'll make a copy of that.
I have other things concerning that cabin as well, other documents. But also that the original house, 36115 West 151st Street, was built in 1971. I think it was said 75 here. It's actually 71. Just for the record, to keep it all proper.
Add that to the comments as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right.
So what?
I don't know what y'all are planning to do with this or what's wrong with it. It should be grandfathered in, in my opinion.
What are you wanting grandfathered in?
I don't know what's going on with it. I just saw the sign, and I came tonight because that's my cabin.
So the staff can provide a response to that if you like, Mr. Chairman, just to answer that question. So the purpose of this application is to get, to essentially permit the existing structures on the property. What the current owner is proposing to do is to split the property.
Which it is under probate.
And allow that to be permitted. This board will consider this application. This is the public hearing. They will make a recommendation, and this will go on to the Board of County Commissioners for final decision. We can, staff will provide an update on that, and you, you're welcome to attend that meeting as well, the Board of County Commissioners. That'll have the final action.
Okay.
And we can, staff can also answer any questions, too, in between now and the Board of County Commissioners meeting, if you'd like. We could give you staff contact information and, and try to answer any other questions.
When was this big, when was the process to do this first initiated? What date? May I ask?
Well, and Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley, planning staff, this application was filed about a month ago, so this, when the public hearing was scheduled, a legal notice was sent out, and this is the first action of this, this evening. This is the public hearing.
Okay. My father and mother, Larry and Carolyn Daly, purchased the house on 36115 West 151st Street in 1971 and put the dwelling there. And my father passed away November 22nd of 2024. His estate is currently in probate. This property, all of it, well, most of it, is at this moment in probate court. So I would say that we need to set aside any development until probate is complete. Wouldn't that be a, I mean, according to the divorce, Larry and Carolyn Daly got a divorce in 1993. October 28th, I think it was, 1993. I have probably the divorce papers with me. And in the divorce decree, the property was to be divided equally between both Larry and Carolyn. They did not divide that property. So the, the acreage that is there, except for the part that the cabin is on. But they did not divide that property. They both, my mother had a stroke, which she's here, Carolyn Daly. My father passed away in, in November. And so in their, after the stroke, she couldn't live alone. My father was having serious health issues, owned a home in Oswaltamie, has a business, Daily Septic Service, which is also in probate. And so for health reasons, Larry and Carolyn both resided at 36115 West 151st Street together, but in separate quarters, as they never rejoined the marriage. They were, they never, they stayed as separate couple. They did not remarry, nor did they set themselves to be remarried. They were single couple living in that resident. They still had a mortgage out on that property because of some situations. They had to take out a second loan, so that property still had a mortgage on it. So they both resided in that for health. And my dad had a business in Gardner. And should I be over here closer? I'm sorry. And so for that reason, he was living in Oswaltamie. It was very difficult for him to drive. He had open-heart surgery. He had a pacemaker. He had his knee surgery. He had an aorta that was enlarged. He had a lot of health issues, and then he ended up with Alzheimer's or dementia. And so due to those reasons, they both resided at the same location until my father's death last November.
So, so in, in, in
And now this.
To this, to the, to the request to divide the property, is that what you're saying that you would, what, what, what is your request, I guess? I just need to make sure.
Doubt about this. I didn't even know what this hearing was about. I just heard, I saw the sign and came. And I'm thankful I did.
Yes.
Because it does involve me as well.
Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley, planning staff, what I would advise, this matter for this evening is a request for, to a permit an existing building as an accessory dwelling unit permit. This will not, this board's recommendation will have no bearing on the actual subdivision of this land. That proposed tract split would be an administrative decision. What we would advise is that the owner can certainly, an applicant can answer any questions. That might be helpful. Then what we would advise is that the, any other interested parties would contact staff, and we could help coordinate with the owners to answer any questions. They can also, if they need to, have a separate counsel or discuss any matters. This sounds like a civil matter. This won't be anything.
Also puts me, I'm, I'm Diana O'Connor, which is on that. Do you have the paper?
We're making copies, but, so this board will not make any decisions tonight that will be subdividing the property.
Okay.
So this matter, sounds like it's outside matter that can be handled between staff and the owners and the other interested parties. So we would just advise that we could help, this is an offline discussion, I think, that we could help answer any questions, and we'll, we will make copies of this for the public record, though. We'll, we're getting copies of that now. We will attach this as part of the public record. It will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners, and we can certainly try to answer any questions in between now and the B O C C meeting.
And so we're making a recommendation to the, the Board of County Commissioners, and, and what we do will not, from my understanding, impact what is going on separate from this. So we're just looking at this property, the, the dwelling, and, and determining that side of it. And these are, is information that is, you know, relevant on, on that side of it. For us, it may or may not, depending on how the board feels, would determine how we decide to, to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
It must, it might also be of interest to note that there are two beneficiaries to that property, which are, my mother, obviously, she's living on the property, but the heirs are my brother and I, which is Brian Daly and myself. So it's to be divided between my father's two children.
And, and we're not, we're not determining division of property. Yeah. Yep. No, it's, it's about the dwelling only, and just determining that that, with the, with the dwelling that we approved, that it's okay to consider it the ADPU? ID?
ADUP.
ADUP, yeah. Yeah, so it really wouldn't impact division or who owns or anything like that.
In order for it to be divided at some point, you can't have the two houses on one lot without this permit.
It's divided, and there is. It was divided back in 1978 or 79, whatever that paper, 79. It was divided.
Mr. Chairman. It may have.
Set on its own lot. Let's put that. It was, was, what do you call it when you have somebody come out and?
We can't, yeah, Sean Pendley, planning staff, we cannot answer any questions that were raised here tonight at this meeting. What we will do, though, we will certainly coordinate with you and get your contact information after the meeting. If you don't mind staying around after the meeting, we could coordinate with you and make sure that we talk to both the speaker and property owner to make sure we have a coordinate this.
Does it make you feel better? Okay, go ahead. We.
Several questions here, right for you, Sean, mostly, but, so the applicant owner line has Carolyn Daly and Brian Daly. So, but if I understand, what you're saying is the owner really is Larry and Carolyn, not Brian and Carolyn.
Correct. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So is Brian here as a guardian or what, what function does?
He's the applicant.
But he's not the owner, so how can he be the applicant?
So you have to have, there's an owner authorization form, or there's a form that he had to sign with Carolyn so that he could act as the applicant.
Okay, so that makes sense. All right, second question is.
I should have been informed, really.
Okay, so the second question is, from a legal perspective, shouldn't we just wait until this goes through probate and, and the ownership is established, and then that owner would apply?
Two points of order here first. Number one, I would advise if we ask if there's any other public comments, and then if there are not, we close the public hearing first. Then we can discuss this and answer questions, so.
So any other, are there any other public comments? Are you, is, are there any other public comments from people that are in attendance? Anybody on Zoom?
No, there's no one on Zoom.
You tell her thank you. She's done. Was it?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. No, yeah. So I do appreciate you coming and sharing, and it, we want to have all the information to make sure we make the best decisions possible with the information or what's been presented to us. So thank you so much, and.
AU, whatever it was, again, the.
If you could, we've provided you with a copy, miss, a copy of the staff report, and again, we can answer questions, but the public hearing is, yeah, set. Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. All right, so now that the, the public part of this is completed, discussion among the, of the application among the zoning board. Questions, comments, concerns?
Bob Paulson, I have a comment. Basically, what I'm looking at here is, she was saying that the property, I'll say, may or may not have been subdivided earlier, okay? But in order for that to happen in future, to make, to fulfill everything that they need, we need to, in my opinion, go ahead and prove the ADU to move that stuff closer so that they can get a resolution as things finish. I don't see any reason not to, in my opinion.
Okay.
I'm Craig Connell here. I'm kind of of the opposite opinion.
We do that.
Yeah, we do. And, and I, I guess I don't see any harm in waiting until this legal process runs out, and then that owner can apply for this permit.
Okay.
For that owner end, end to be.
All right, Sean.
Eve, that Zoe can confirm this, but I believe the application that we, we have, we do have an owner authorization form, and the owner that is authorized to sign on behalf of the property did sign this application, so they are authorized to act on behalf of this. If there's any ownership questions, you know, really, I don't think that that's anything that we can resolve here this evening. So, you know, I think it would not be incorrect to move forward with a recommendation. However, if for whatever reason something does come up that is information that we didn't have at the time of the application, it is possible that this may have to be remanded back to this board if there was a question on the ownership. I can't answer that this evening, and I don't know if we have all of the information. We can certainly ask the applicant if they would like to provide any additional information to help clarify this. That might be warranted as well, so it's really, staff can try to provide any answers, but the owner maybe as well.
Okay. And so if, if the applicant does have something, if you, yeah, name, address, and then at the, if there's anything that you would like to add?
Yeah, Brian Daly. I live in Gardner, 840 North Poplar. It's my mom's property, 36115 West 151st, and the cabin, too. So during the divorce, everything was left to my mom, and after the will was left, everything was to my mom. So I've got copies of these right here if you'd like to look at that.
Yeah. Any additional information you'd like to share with us?
We're just trying to bring the property into compliance. You know, it's, I guess we figured out, we thought it was already divided, too, but I guess it wasn't. So we're just trying to make it, or the county's up to code, so.
Any questions of the board for the applicant?
Bob Paulson, are both of these dwellings, are they occupied at this time?
They are. They are, yeah.
So we're just bringing it up into compliance?
Yeah, yeah.
What was already?
Already livable and lived in and maintained, yeah. Oh, yep. They've been there for quite a while, so.
Roger Spears, I, I don't see any reason to delay. I, I, I think that these matters are completely separated. Bringing the property into compliance with code is a proper thing to do, and I don't believe that the other things that have been presented have any impact on that. It just brings it into compliance with code. I see no reason to delay.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other questions? Are you guys good?
Any other? I think we're good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley, again, we'll also make copies of this information that the owner provided to us and return the. Mr. Chairman, Sean Penley, again, we'll also make copies of this information that the owner provided to us and return those. And we'll also make this part of the record. I do believe that this, that is correct, that these are civil matters that are handled outside of this process. So just for your information, certainly we'll discuss this with the owner and, and make sure that this is provided an update to the Board of County Commissioners as well.
Okay. Any other discussion among the board? Clarification, anything that you'd like to share? Okay. So I would ask for a recommendation by the, the board on how we should proceed? And a second?
This is Roger Spears. I move that we recommend approval of the accessory dwelling unit permit to allow a 948 square foot accessory dwelling unit in the R U R district, subject to the stipulations in the report.
Do I have a second?
Bob Paulson will second.
Can we have a vote?
It's Roger Spears.
Aye.
Ray Connell.
No.
John DeGrand.
Abstain.
Donna Gutzman.
Aye.
Bob Paulson.
Aye.
And Jeff Huff.
Aye.
Thank you. Most should pass this.
All right. Thank you very much. The Board of County Commissioners, meeting date and location, please?
That will be heard by the Board of County Commissioners on August 14th at 9:30 a.m. in this room.
All right. Perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. With that, we will move to the, the next item of business here. We've, the Southwest Metro Area Johnson County Transportation Connection Plan. And if we could have a speaker or a presenter?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Sean Penley, planning staff. I'll introduce Jeffrey Vos who are at the Public Works Department, but just a quick introduction on this item. This is the Southwest Metro Paulson Area Johnson County Transportation Connection Plan. This is a plan that started, I believe, last year as a result of the recent annexation. As I'm sure all of you are aware, the, the Astro Enterprise Park, which is the former Sunflower Army ammunition plant. As a result of that annexation and changes in land use in that surrounding area and the transportation network in that area, staff recognized that there was going to need to be an update for the transportation network in that entire area. So the County Public Works Department has started a study of this area and working with a consultant and various jurisdictions in the surrounding area. And so what Jeffrey will provide an update on here are the results of that study and the recommendations. And then we could talk about next steps. This will ultimately result in an update to our current plan for the county. But first, for this evening, Jeffrey will give an update on the Transportation Connection Plan. And then we can answer any questions for this board. There's no action needed by this board for this item. It's just an informational update. The planning commission will have a public hearing item on the current plan, though. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, Sean. Jeff Vos, I'm the engineering manager for Johnson County Public Works. I appreciate you having me out this evening to go through this. I am going to be focusing on the unincorporated county recommendations. I'm not going to go through all the city recommendations. There is, the full study is on our website. So if you want to go look at those, you can. I'm going to start out by reviewing a little bit about Carnap. You know, it's our comprehensive arterial road network plan. It's part of the overall comprehensive plan that's reviewed annually and updated as necessary. It's a look at the potential capacity needs for unincorporated roads as development occurs. It preserves options by managing access control, and it's there to inform the public. What Carnap is not, it is not a construction document. There is no guarantees that we will ever upgrade, change any of these roads. And it does not contain a timeline. So this is only as development occurs and the traffic develops because of that. I have the update history listed here. These are all the major updates that we've gone through. And as you can see, in the upper left-hand corner, there's some green and pink areas there. Those were corridors that were left to be studied as the, the Sunflower Plant. People didn't know what it was going to be. You know, one time it's going to be a city in the park. One time it was going to be an amusement park. Now it's industrial in the park is what I'm calling it. So. So there's that large area that we really hadn't studied, but we have done some studies in here. We've studied the 111th Street Corridor, the East-West Corridor, and determined the alignment for that. We also studied the first, the eastmost pink corridor there and came up with the Northwest Corridor alignment. That's an offset alignment that we were looking to potentially build at some point. And then the area that hadn't really been studied is the area through the Sunflower Plant itself over here on the left. So Carnap designations, when we talk about these, we have type ones, twos, and threes. We have two-lane versions and four-lane versions of these. And really, what this is trying to do is protect the ultimate capacity of the roads. So as a road moves up higher in the designations, the potential capacity of the road increases. This is accomplished by limiting the access points. Thus, the higher designation, the more restrictive the road access will be. So the study itself, you know, with the Astro Enterprise Park and the old Sunflower Property and their first big tenant Panasonic being developed, the county determined it was time to see what the impacts of these developments could have on Western Johnson County Road Network and provide the affected jurisdictions, the tools to determine the current, or changes to their current planning documents. Thus, the scope for the Transportation Connection Plan is to determine how to reconnect the Astro Enterprise Park to the rest of the road network that was cut off when the Sunflower Plant was established. Establish or designated the unstudied north-south corridor through the Astro Enterprise Park. Review the viability of the previous determined Kill Creek Route, Northwest Corridor Route, and the 111th Street Routes. And then look at the wider area to see what changes might be needed. H N T B was selected for the study. The core team chose H N T B to leverage all the study information they had collected as part of the K-10 Corridor Study for KDOT, which took an extensive look at traffic and land use projections from I-35 around Edgerton to K-10 and ultimately up to I-70. The core teams consisted of DeSoto, Johnson County, KDOT, while the technical committee consisted of Edgerton, Gardner, Alatha, Udora, Douglas County, Mid-America Regional Council, Douglas County's MPO, Astro Enterprise Park, and Johnson County Park and Recreation. So quite, quite the technical group. The recommendations really are nothing super extraordinary and somewhat expected. On the west side of the Astro Enterprise Park, we are looking at reconnecting the section line roads, 119th Street, 127th Street, and 135th Street. And those would be type one two-lane roads. On the west side, we have 127th Street and 135th Street. And then we have the north-south corridor, which would connect the Evening Star Interchange down to Edgerton Road. So pretty much what that pink corridor was, and that's certainly not a final alignment through there. That's just an indication of where that connection is looking to be. The Kill Creek Road Corridor, that northwest corridor that I mentioned, that was an offset alignment, that is not needed in the projection. So we are looking at removing that from the Carnap alignment. And then we're looking at designated what we call the Kill Creek Corridor there, which is Kill Creek Road, 115th and Waverly down to 135th Street. So we look at improvements on those. 111th Street Corridor, we did determine that we would need that, but we're downgrading it from a type two four-lane road to a type two two-lane road. And then as we move across north-south, we're looking at Four Corners from 143rd to 151st being upgraded to a type two from a type one. We're looking at Moonlight Road from 135th to 175th being a type two four-lane facility. And then 143rd Street, the original Carnap had a range of what that was going to be across there. We're looking at the, the first two miles there from county line to Edgerton to being a type two two-lane. Then go into a type two four-lane from Edgerton to Four Corners. And then back to a type two two-lane from Four Corners to the Alatha city limits. The idea there is what the traffic models were showing, the traffic splitting between Edgerton Road and Four Corners Road going north and south there. And then Dilly Road was a type two. It's going back to a type one. And 151st, Dilly to Four Corners is going back to a type one. So it's just, instead of traffic making a couple little jogs straight up and then over. And that's really it. That's, that's the recommendations for the unincorporated. We'll let, I'll pull up a slide for next steps here in a minute, let Sean talk about that. But really, that's my presentation, and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Greg Connell, I've heard rumors, this is actually from a KDOT meeting I went to a while back, that they wanted to go all the way to I-70 at some point on Western Johnson County. Would that be where the Evening Star four-lane road is?
So potentially it could be, but I think KDOT, as part of the K-10 corridor, decided not to show anything going north-south through Johnson County, that outer loop at this point. So this is not to preclude that sort of route somewhere in the area. This would be, if that didn't happen, this would be what the county would need to be doing to upgrade the roads to handle that traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Donna Gutzman, just a question on why on 143rd Street are you going from Edgerton Road, you're going four lanes to Four Corners, and then you're dropping back to two lanes? What, what's the purpose of having that section there, four lanes?
So we saw the traffic going north was splitting between Edgerton and Four Corners Road. So there is a significant amount of traffic going north on Four Corners and then making a left turn to go west on 143rd and then back north on Edgerton. So as the traffic builds there, people are probably going, the model predicts that people will split out where they're going instead of overloading one of the roads. So there, there wasn't nearly as much east-west all the way across the corridor to warrant it all being four-laned.
Okay, thank you.
Spears, on Four Corners there, the part to the south of 151st, is that already? I'm sorry, my microphone is off. I'll start over. Roger Spears. The, the part to the south of 151st Street, is that already a, the same as the new designation between 151st, 143rd, going to a, I believe you said, type two two-lane?
Yeah, I believe it was originally a type one two-lane. So it's just going up a category.
But it's basically making the part, the, the part that you've got showing improved match what goes to the south?
Yes, I believe you are correct.
Okay, that, that's what I, that's what I assumed.
Yes.
And, and just to clarify for me, when you look at this, this is simply what the models tell you the traffic flow is going to need.
Yes.
Not a plan to start construction on anything.
Correct.
It's, it's simply what we need to do for rights of way and, and setbacks and, and things for the potential of future traffic.
Yes, yes. It's to protect that potential capacity.
Right.
Yes, yes. There's absolutely no schedule for this. This is not a construction document. There are no plans under development at this point. There's no funding for any of this. This is just, just what, based on what we saw is the most likely scenario for growth in the area, this is what we think we may need in the future.
And one more, Roger Spears, and really, when it comes down to it, the Carnap Plan, its primary purpose is as a tool for the zoning boards to look at for approval, approval or denial of, of plans of properties along those, those corridors.
Yes, certainly, very much. Yes.
And, and that's not widely understood by the general public.
Correct. Yes.
Greg Connell, one more question. 111th Street, currently dead ends at county line. And, and this map, it shows it dead ending at the county line again.
Yes.
Is Douglas County intending to connect to that? Because that's a, there's two creeks running through there. It's a pretty deep valley.
Yeah, I don't necessarily believe so. And then, you know, right now, there's no bridge across the river for College Boulevard as well.
Right.
So that one's definitely going to be very much driven by development and some of the things that happen around it to provide the traffic for it. So that one might be a little further in the future than others.
Yeah.
But I, as part of the overall recommendations, Alatha is showing a corridor going around crossing the creek there. So their ultimate plan is to make that connection on that side. So it's going to be what that traffic is going across there into the Astro Park or through the Astro Park.
This is Jeff Huff. This, this is the, you know, where it is right now, your projections. What additional evaluation, what would happen as traffic increases and all of those things? This is, this is fairly adjustable then at this point until everything is?
Yes. I mean, we do have the triggers policy as part of the comp plan that talks about how and when the roads are actually capacity upgrades potentially made. We certainly will also be looking at what the level of service is on there. As things start to degrade, then obviously we start needing to do something there. And it could depend on the capacity. It could be on what the development is and the access points that are causing the issues. So it's going to be an evaluation of just watching what's going on, looking at our traffic counts and getting an idea. When we start getting complaints from residents about traffic, we start to take a look at things. So it's, it's a, you know, it's, there's a lot of factors that go into that decision.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
And just, I mean, we have not done a capacity increase on unincorporated in quite a while. Because I, I don't remember one. I've been here 17 years. So. To give you an idea.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Any other questions? No. Thank you so much for, for sharing.
And then we got next steps here, and I'll let Sean talk about that.
Thanks, Jeff. So yes, as Jeff mentioned, you know, this, these are the recommendations from this study. So the next steps, this will ultimately require, these recommendations will be, require an update to the Carnap Plan. Carnap Plan is adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. So that will require a public hearing and we'll provide more information to the planning commission, answer any questions. So the schedule right now, we've had updates both to the planning commission. And now we're going to do both zoning wars. So we'll also have an update to the East Zoning Board, although most of the recommendations do affect the west side of the county. So we're going to have an update at the August meeting, as I mentioned, for the planning commission meeting, where we'll have this map that Jeff shared here with some of the recommendations. That will be incorporated into the comprehensive plan, that map update, along with some text. And then there will be the public hearing in September at the September 23rd meeting. And anyone is welcome to attend that meeting and provide public comments. Then a recommendation, the planning commission will provide a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, which is anticipated to be in October, but that date may be subject to change, just depending on the information we receive. But that, ultimately, the Board of County Commissioners will adopt that Carnap Plan as part of a comprehensive plan update. So very good questions. Jeff answered them very well. Thanks, Mr. Spears. That question is really a good question about the policy directive. You're really what this Carnap map and the Carnap plan is more policy related to let property owners know that are along arterial roads, what is the plan for future capacity? It does set the policy for what's allowed in terms of frontage requirements, access, mainly just to let them know that there are limitations on access on arterial roads and requirements for right-of-way. So if anybody has any plans for future division of land, they need to be aware of these policy requirements that do limit access and right-of-way. It's not a construction schedule. Most of this is usually driven by development. And oftentimes, when the city's annexed out further into the county, they, they run into these arterial roads. And often, it's a development requirement to upgrade the roads when development occurs on those frontages of these arterial roads. But it's also good policy for the unincorporated area in the county to know, so the property owners are aware of these requirements. They're arterial roads. They're going to continue to be used. And so this update just helps set that public information. helps set that public information out there, and it helps set policy for the county. So with that, happy to answer any other questions.
Bob Paulson, the August 26th meeting and the September 23rd meetings, the second one is a public hearing. Are we able to come to the August one? And what time and where were those being?
Yeah, those are the Planning Commission meeting dates, and what we would advise, since the zoning board members, we've provided an update, we usually advise for those meetings, anyone's welcome to attend, but if you're, we advise if anyone wants to make comment on those, to probably just provide any comments and written comments. Often being a part of the public hearing, though, if you're a zoning board member, we just don't want any kind of a conflict or a potential quorum of a board. So we wouldn't want a quorum of the board appearing at Planning Commission, but you're certainly, anyone's welcome to attend or watch online all these meetings, you know, they're, they're streamed, well, we have Zoom webinar. Anybody's welcome to watch these online or attend in person, certainly, to hear the public comments or to provide any written comments to staff as well. But those meeting dates are Planning Commission meeting dates, and so the Planning Commission is the board that provides the recommendation to the BACC.
Sean, Roger Spears, just to clarify, I believe the last meeting that dealt with that, the word that was sent out was that zoning board members were welcome to attend but should not make public comment because it could be a violation of the Open Meetings Act, and if you were on Zoom, you didn't, there was no problem, but you also should not make comments on Zoom, if I understood that right.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's, we definitely coordinate with legal on those kinds of issues, and we just, what we want to avoid is a potential Open Meetings Act violation or a problem. If we were to have a quorum of another board attend that meeting, then that's a violation of an Open Meetings Act. We don't want to do that. We would just advise, usually it's best to just, you're welcome to watch online and, again, provide any written comments that can be made as part of the record, but we just advise it's best not to usually have another board member show up and participate in the hearing. It just, it presents potential problems, but certainly, staff can answer any questions as well, and, but you're, you're welcome to provide those comments, and we can make them a, a part of the record, but yeah, that's usually the best practice for, just to avoid the potential of a quorum.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. The next item is election of officers, and so I would say that we have a recommendation for Chair and Vice Chair. Start with Chair first.
That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sean Pennley Planning Staff. Yes, so we do have this annual update, so if you recall, in the new bylaws that have been adopted for all the boards, we generally set out the election of officers. We want to have that annually now. Used to be, it was about every other year, we have this annually. We try to have it in June or soon thereafter, so this is the best opportunity here since we now have the majority of the board members. So, yep, we just need some nominations for the Chair and the Vice Chair, and we'll have the board vote on the board, the Chair and Vice Chair for the next year.
Craig Connell will nominate Jeff Huff for Chair.
Does anybody want to cut me off at my knees? I mean, no, I'm just joking. So anybody for, how about a Vice Chair nomination? Or do you want to vote?
Yeah, first, we could do a vote for the Chair. We'd do the roll call vote if there's, and was there a second? There's a second?
Roger Spears, I'll, go ahead.
Hey, Roger.
Got it.
Bob Paulson will second.
All right, can we take a vote?
Yes, Roger Spears.
Aye.
Craig Connell.
Aye.
John DeGran.
Aye.
Donna Gutzman.
Aye.
Bob Paulson.
Aye.
And Jeff Huff.
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right, very good. Recommendations for Vice Chair?
This is Roger Spears. I nominate Craig Connell as Vice Chair.
Donna Gutzman, second.
There you go. All right, can we have a vote?
Roger Spears.
Aye.
Craig Connell.
I abstain.
John DeGran.
Aye.
Donna Gutzman.
Aye.
Bob Paulson.
Aye.
And Jeff Huff.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
That's very good. Wow, you're stuck with me for another year here, so. All right, is there any other business that we would like to bring before the board? There is not. So at that, I will move that we adjourn the meeting. The meeting is adjourned.